Got thirty seconds. All right, we're ready to begin.
Hey, well, it's six P M. And I'm in call to order this Lacey City Council work session on July twenty third, twenty twenty four. We have two council members attending remotely, council member Dunning and council member Stedman. I also want to acknowledge that we, the city of Lacey here, are on ancestral land of tribal people of the Treaty of Mason Creek, including the Squally Tribe and the Squawson Island Tribe. That can I get a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as published?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in fair and emotions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone opposed? In that motion he announced he carries, we have approved our evening's agenda. First up on our agenda is our draft interlocal agreement with the Dram Road Island Annexation.
Okay. Thank you. Give me one second to presentation. All right, great. So yeah, you have an interlocal agreement in front of you, a draft interlocal agreement for review tonight. As you may remember, earlier this year, the council adopted a couple of ordinances. Annexations that created unincorporated islands. One around the Dram Road Annexation and two around the Cuyo Park North Annexations. I'm going to talk a little bit here about those those areas shortly. So basically, in in. So under a relatively new provision of Washington State law, we're able to enter into an interlocal agreement with Thurston County now to address these annexations, and that is part of the process. So I'm going to, number one, explain a little bit about where those islands are tonight. Go into the draft interlocal agreement, provide, you know, you're able to provide any feedback here tonight. And then final part of the presentation will be to talk about kind of next steps and how this goes through the process because it is somewhat unique and not a process that we've gone through before. So I just want to make sure that the council is kind of familiar and aware of the the process as we move forward. So with that, as I mentioned, there's three separate island areas of islands. Those are shown on the map here. So I'll start out with the one that was created with the Dram Road Annexation. So this is two hundred and fifty-three acres north of Fifteenth Avenue and Dram Road. Extends basically from our now current western city limits that comes down from Cuyo Park over to the east, east of Carpenter Road. Does have Woodland Creek Estates kind of on the western portion of that. So that's the only real formal subdivision in the area. And then I'll say a kind of a smattering of some larger lots, individual homes on on larger lots. And then the other two islands are at the very northwest corner of our urban growth area. These islands were created by the annexation of Cuyo Park. They total about nineteen acres. I think I believe there's maybe seven or eight parcels total. These are, again, larger residential properties that we were not able to annex with Cuyo Park because if you remember, we're only able to annex that property because it's municipal purpose annexation, which means we have to own the property. So that's why we didn't annex those parcels at that point. A total estimated population is about four hundred residents. So next step, I'm going to go through a little bit around the interlocal agreement, which was the draft was provided in your packet. So at this point, the council's request to review this, provide any feedback. This is an interlocal agreement with Thurston County, and so the Board of County Commissioners are also doing a parallel review at this point. So this where this interlocal agreement comes from is we as staff, basically since late last year being this year, have been working with Thurston County staff to come up with the points within our local agreement. Staff at this point feels comfortable moving this forward, but ultimately it takes the council's authority to to adopt this interlocal agreement. So I'm just going to briefly run through the the major issues in the interlocal agreement. So we'll start on page two around compliance with previous interlocal agreements. So there's two that primarily cover this area. One is an old interlocal agreement back to nineteen ninety that establishes things like revenue sharing and those kinds of things when it comes to annexations. And basically, this section is saying that basically, there's not going to be any sharing of of funds in this section through, you know, any additional tax revenue that's generated and those kinds of things. The big one here, though, is on the second part of number two, which is around an existing agreement the city signed with Thurston County back in twenty twelve regarding the Woodland Creek Estates Sewer Project. So Woodland Creek Estates was on a, was not on any kind of city utilities as far as sewer goes. They had some water quality issues at Woodland Creek and through a project through Thurston County. Thurston County did a loan to install a sewer system in that area. It's a step system. Basically, this is making clear that upon annexation, this the agreement stays in place, that ownership is not to be transferred to the city until that loan is paid off.
So I didn't realize those were step systems. When the loan is paid off and it reverts to us, will we then, as we have in practice, take over the step systems?
I believe we already maintain them.
Okay.
So and that's that's part of what's in the in this ILA is we already maintain that. We already service them. What we're saying is we're on a payoff, the loan over Thurston County. So that that the service requirements will not be changing as a result of the interlocal.
Got it. Got it. Okay, thanks.
Section four around stormwater fees and maintenance. This basically states that Thurston County's stormwater fees will be in effect through December thirty first of this year, regardless of the date of annexation, and that beginning January first, twenty twenty five is when the city would start collecting. That's for basically the ease of collecting, starting at the very first day of the year. The next kind of two sections all combined together about records and open permits. So Thurston County will transfer to the city any kind of design drawings, as built, those kinds of things around their their public works improvements in the area, specifically around streets and and stormwater. There are a couple of existing culverts in the area that that will need the records for specifically around Woodland Creek and Eagle Creek. So Woodland Creek is on Dram Road and Eagle Creek is on Carpenter Road. And then section six around open permits. So they will transfer to us any permits that they've issued that are active, that we would then pick up responsibilities around inspections and those kinds of things. So at this point, we've in discussions with Thurston County, there may be some small kind of remodel type permits, but nothing major in that area. Again, most of these properties are, I'll say, relatively unserviced. So there there's not a lot, there's not a high demand for development in this area. And then final section that I'll talk about here is section seven, which is unexpended SEPA mitigation fees. So there have been some SEPA fees collected. This is fees that are collected under the State Environmental Policy Act. About a hundred thousand dollars that the city would gain as a result of this. There are timelines with that. We have to expend that money within a certain timeframe and only for projects that were created by the development that that had to submit the SEPA mitigation fee. So there are some limitations on that. And again, it's about a hundred thousand dollars. It's not going to pay for a lot. Just be aware of that, that that and Thurston County has already expended some of that money and some of their pre-work in in designing some of the infrastructure for the area. The rest, I'll say, is fairly boilerplate. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this point, if there are any on those specific sections of the ILA.
I did have one on section ten. And it says in here that the city agrees that for a period of five years, any parcel zone for residential development within the annexed area will be maintained a zoning designation, that provides residential development, and not have its minimum gross residential density reduced. What exactly does that mean? Not have its minimum gross residential density reduced while the density had allowed for the zoning? So so if we did want to make a change in that area, we we'd have to wait for five years. Is that basically?
It basically says, we we can't come in and convert a bunch of residential property to commercial, I think is the number one concern, so that we can't come in and take advantage of the situation so that we all of a sudden gain a bunch of revenue out of this annexation. And this comes straight from a state law. So this is not necessarily part of the ILA. It's just being recognized here. So I think there's that. And then number two is that we can't come in a downzone areas as well, that we have to at least maintain that residential zoning, or if we did anything, it would be upzoning.
Got it. Some more questions?
Let me, happy to take questions at the end as well. Just wanted to go through this schedule with you as well. So hard to see here, but basically at the top of the slide says that by the end of this month, or the city council and the Board of County Commissioners tentatively agree on the draft interlocal agreement and give staff to move forward. So that's where we're at tonight is just to give you some ability to give some feedback and and request that we move forward, I think.
So somewhere in here said something to the effect that, like, we are going to meet with the commissioners, or we're all going to have a meeting prior to.
Yeah, so we're gonna have a a draft. Not to have a draft, we're going to have a joint public here. Does that have to be a joint, or are we just trying to make it easy?
Yeah, let me get into the schedule a little bit. We can talk out when when I get to that section. We'll go into that in a little more detail. So so from here, the next step is that we have to do a thirty-day notification to affected taxing districts on the agreement. And they the affected taxing districts could join in this interlocal agreement. And those two affected taxing districts that we've identified thus far are number one, Fire District Three. Number two could be Fire District Eight, which is the South Bay Fire District. So they, with the annexation, Fire District Eight would be losing some of their their territory because any annexations that we do, as with previous annexations, if they are located in a fire district eight, that area gets transferred to Fire District Three automatically upon annexation. So we'll give those that notice to the the taxing districts, and they will have the ability to kind of raise their hands and and if they would like to enjoin the agreement.
Have they already given notice that they're not, don't want to be a part of this?
I would imagine that Fire District Three would not. It may, I haven't reached out to Fire District Eight yet. Fire District Eight.
We met with, we met with Fire District Three last week, and they gave us notice that they've talked to Fire District Eight.
Okay.
Everything should, it's good to go.
That's great news.
This is an area that called for Fire District Eight to to serve with their.
Yeah. So coming up, so that would take us through August. In September, both the city and the county are required to publish a notice of availability once a week in the paper for four weeks. So that's notice of availability of the draft interlocal agreement. And coming up into September, October timeframe, we would then work into this, the public process. So again, there's about four hundred residents that would be affected by this that would be annexed. So we want to make sure that people are aware that of this process existing and kind of what might happen as a result of the annexation. We've already, we've done these on several occasions. I think we would do them kind of in a similar format that we have before, kind of letting people know what and the consequences are around annexation in terms of change in services and and those kinds of things. Generally, the feedback that we've gotten in the past is that people appreciate the higher level of service that they're getting for for Lacey. And typically, that doesn't doesn't necessarily come with much additional cost to them. A lot of times, it could even be a cost savings. Specifically, these properties do not pay utility taxes, most of them, because they're not connected to city utilities, except for Woodland Creek Estates. So, you know, that that cost to them really, you know, may be a wash, or they may even be paying less. But we'll we'll do that work, and we'll reach out to the folks and let them know what the consequences of the annexation will be. So that brings me to October first, twenty twenty four, which is marked on the calendar at this point as the joint public hearing. So you brought that up, the the, there is a requirement that a public hearing be held. There are two different options. The public hearing can be held separately, but they need to be held by both the board and and the city. Or the simpler thing is to combine and and do a joint hearing so that we're not confusing the issue. Do you go to the board hearing? Do you go to the city council hearing, those kinds of things? So the idea at this point, yeah, the idea at this point is October first would be that joint public hearing. So from there, moving forward, if there's concerns at that point, if there's, you know, residents raised issues or issues that have come up as far as the review of the interlocal agreement, then there would be post-hearing work sessions either at the Thurston County Board of Commissioner level or with you as the city council. We're we're trying to pencil in right now, November, as the final consideration of the annexation ILA. So that means basically both would go to the board and the city council for final agreement, so for final approval of the interlocal agreement. And if both parties approve, the city proceeds with the annexation by the end of the year. So that would be at that point, simply adopting an ordinance to to complete the annexation, which we're trying to project out by the end of this year. So that's our our projected timeline at this point. So.
So can we go back to the map just for a second?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, so it's just the big red part right now.
The three red.
All three.
Yep.
Three red parts.
Yep.
Now that'll that'll shore us up. That'll limit all the islands in that area with the, I guess, there is no exception, that little finger up there.
Right. Yep, it'll eliminate the islands that were created by our recent annexation.
Three for one.
Yeah.
And it was also when the Board of County Commissioners chose not to invoke jurisdiction on the Dram Road Annexation, the two parcels that created that island. But it was with the expectation that we would move forward with this ILA to take care of the island piece as well. So there's a daisy chain system approach, if you will.
Is this the one where they were saying Lacey's creating island and?
Yep.
Yeah, that we had that conversation.
Yes. But we also done a lot of, you know, the city, the city has helped that area quite a bit. We put a million dollars into the into the, yeah, so they've already, we've already been, you know, working in that area for a long time, and I think developed some good relationships. So I think it should be no problem. Anyway, is there any other questions?
You don't need a motion on that.
No.
No, just general agreement that we're okay to move forward with, as long as there's no concerns at this point on the ILA. We can move through the process. There will be other avenues, opportunities for you to review along the way. But this will allow us to get started in the notification process and all those things and come back to you for that public hearing October first.
My only question is how, how, where are the residents who would be affected by this of the plan? And are we hearing any complaints that they've been notified?
So we we haven't notified them yet. We will, as part of our outreach, as part of the open house, we'll be doing in the next several months. I think there's general kind of understanding that there may be some annexations happening in that area, especially given the Dram Road Annexation with that forty-three acres. And then discussions around the islands and then the kind of guarantees that we will fill in those islands. So I think there's some general awareness. But, you know, we haven't done any direct outreach at this point, and that's what one of the next steps that we'll be doing is making make sure people are aware and that they have the ability to kind of figure out what what it means for them. And like I said, we've done, I think, a good job in the past in developing some information that's helped helped people. I think generally people assume that their taxes are going to go up, or we're going to require them to connect to sewer or those kinds of misconceptions. And I think, you know, holding these forums and giving that information, a lot of times puts people at ease as far as what annexations mean for them.
That's one of the exact things we've heard in the past. We've had some of these when we did, you know, Capital City, that was their thing, right?
Yeah.
It forces to hook up.
Now they love that they're.
No, that's a, yeah.
So they get to stay on while it's up, right?
Right. So annexations, they do not trigger any requirements for connection. So that it stays the same regardless if you're in the city limits or if you're in the urban growth area as far as the the requirements to connect to city utilities.
Capital City was kind of just a one-off.
That was, yeah.
Special.
That was.
Need to do that every time.
Yes. That was separate, yeah.
Awesome.
Is that the term to say something?
Did you, yeah, could you make a point?
Chambers Estates along with Cap City.
Okay, is there anything else? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next up is our interlocal agreement for the home consortium.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Michelle Chavez, and I'm with the City of Lacey, and I am the Human Services Coordinator. And I am here to talk to you tonight about the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven home interlocal agreement. So what is home funding? Home is a federal program that's administered by HUD. The eligible activities include building, buying, or rehabilitating affordable housing for rent, building home for homes for low-income households to purchase, down payment assistance to low-income households when purchasing a home, and then tenant-based rental assistance to low-income households. Currently, Thurston County does not use home funds for this purpose. So home funds in Thurston County, Thurston County is a home entitlement community, receives annual allocation of a formula grant funding based on appropriations. Juris jurisdictions alone cannot receive home funding. Thurston County oversees the program, and they have a consortium that works with local nonprofits to construct housing and run programs. So we have a current ILA in our local agreement, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. The home funds can be spent anywhere in the county, but they must be used to benefit households that make less than eighty percent of the area of median income. So up at the screen, you can see we have highlighted the home projects that have been funded from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-four. Lacey's had one, two, three, four different projects funded. One was on Gulf Road back in twenty seventeen. There were two habitat projects, one in twenty eighteen, one in twenty twenty. And then we have the Lehigh Project in twenty twenty-four, which is Maple Court for Permanent Support of Housing. So this home interlocal agreement assures that Lacey's participation in the consortium as a member, so we've always been a member. But because we were part of the CDBG Urban County Program, we were listed grouped in that consortium. This will make us a signatory and similar to Olympia, because we're going to be our own entitlement program now. Future planning and coordination of the home funds are done by the Home Community, Home Committee, which is the Regional Housing Council, serves as the Home Committee. New ILA assures that home projects can continue being funded in Lacey. So it's very similar to the ILA interlocal agreement that's expiring. Just a little bit different language about City of Lacey being our own entitlement community and that we will be signing on, we'll have signatories, or we were not a signatory before. So the reason why I'm bringing this to you today is that it has to run concurrent with the CDBG program years. So the home ILA needs to run concurrent with CDBG twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven. It includes new language with us as an independent CDBG entitlement community. We need, it needs to be signed by Thurston County, Olympia, and Lacey, and is due to the county on August eighth to meet HUD deadline so that we can make sure that home starts on time and CDBG starts on that. So my recommendation today, we don't need action, but we'd like to bring forward a resolution on August sixth to enter into the interlocal agreement on this home home consortium. The advantage is that we can continue having affordable housing projects funded by home in the City of Lacey like we have in the past. The disadvantage is really none because we want to continue having these affordable housing projects in Lacey.
Questions? It's pretty straightforward.
So we will be back.
Okay.
Right on time.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And next up is our public comment and public hearing policy. Shannon.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers. I am here tonight to talk about public comments. Let me start my presentation here. All right. Well, just for a little bit of background, although I know this body is well aware of the previous times that I've come before you to talk about this topic. But we have been here to review public comments and public hearing policies at the June eighteenth meeting and prior to that at the May seventh meeting. In addition to that, we also reviewed it with the Commission on Equity and also the Lacey Youth Council and our staff advisor advisory bodies and liaisons to our advisory boards. Our recommendation here tonight is discussion only. I really just want to make sure I'm getting good direction from the council on a couple of topics that were discussed last time. And that way, pending that conversation in the direction, we can come back with a resolution at a future date with all of that considered. So one thing I did just want to stress really quickly, and I know you've seen this slide before, but I wanted to highlight a couple of things on here. These are just a couple of the articles of Zoom bombings that have occurred around Washington State. And I've highlighted in the red boxes that every time this has happened, this has happened online with remote call-ins. And the majority of them have been unregistered remote call-ins. So individuals who are not signed up call in and then take over the public comment period. And so you can see with each one of these, it was virtual call-in using Zoom functioning. We did some research on this topic. We attended a couple of trainings. We did some reading through MRSC. One of the trainings that we attended specifically gave some options and some considerations for municipalities to consider. One of them was, you know, number one, you could just eliminate remote participation in whole. The only time you would need to provide that would be under OPMA laws and, you know, when it's requested specifically. The other option that MRSC came up with is that you could take steps to identify the or verify the identity of those speakers. And one way, you know, you can identify speakers and not to say you're asking for an ID specifically and their phone number and all of that. But you can have them pre-register, provide a little bit of information in advance. And so again, it's not specific to the identification exactly of a person, but it provides another step that individuals wouldn't have to take.
Aren't we already doing that? They have to do the two hours in advance now.
Currently, and that is exactly what we have in place right now. So for remote comments, you would have to register in advance for two hours. We talked a little bit in the past presentations just about abridging the freedom of speech and our First Amendment rights and the difference between hate speech and hate crime offenses and how hate speech is protected by First Amendment rights crosses over when it turns into a hate crime offense. We discussed also about public comment, how it's considered a limited public forum for free speech purposes, meaning that governments like the City of Lacey can regulate the time, place, and manner of speech, provided that the regulations are reasonable and content neutral. We also went over the OPMA rules that said that we have to have public comment at all regular meetings of a governing body where a final action is taken. And this includes our advisory boards as well. We also discussed previously about what was in the current policy manual and how it had, you know, very permissive language, but not necessarily standardized or directive. So you can see again, you've got terms like encouraged, asked to, may limit, may interrupt, et cetera. So when we reviewed this the last time with the council, we got some additional feedback. And I put up five points here. These were the five that I came away with after listening again to the meeting and during the meeting. And I would say the first three are kind of substantive ideas that I want to spend most of our time going over. And then the last, number four and number five are really kind of administrative, and I think I got some pretty clear definition. But just want to confirm here tonight that the direction this body would like us to take. So the first item is unregistered individuals. So to consider allowing unregistered individuals, both in-person and remote, the ability to provide public comment without signing up in advance, provided there is sufficient time. The second one was time limitations. So to consider removing the section that allows limitations of time dedicated to a specific issue. And then the third item was work session feedback opportunities and taking a look specifically at the practice of allowing community members to provide feedback on certain topics at the invitation of the city council. The four and five, we have microphone controls, which is talks about turning off microphones and establishing a public comment period and then timers so that individuals can see how much time is left on their public comment. Not just for those giving them, but also for staff and the council as well. So I did want to just take a look at what is in our current policy right now, just to highlight that there is a section on Order of Business in seven point zero seven that delineates language for regular meetings. And then there is another subsection of that that talks about work sessions. And then there is another subsection of that that talks about work sessions specifically. So when we look at the regular meetings, it has very specific language on public comment and public hearings. And when we take a look at the work session meetings, it really only has comments specific to written public comments at this period of time. So just to highlight here is the snapshot of Order of Business. And the first thing it starts off with right here is that the council sets the Order of Business for regular council meetings. And then it talks about what that Order of Business is and everything that's within those particular items. And you can see it has a section that is carved out specifically for public comment, and it provides the opportunity for members of the public to address the body verbally as well as remotely. It does have some language in here right now that the mayor may interrupt public comments that continue too long, relate negatively to others, or are otherwise inappropriate. And that's one of the reasons why we need to take a look at this language, again, being content neutral. And it says in here currently, this is what the policy says, provided there is time, the mayor will offer the opportunity for members of the public that did not pre-register, sign in to provide public comment. In distinction, the section continues on, and then it outlines what work sessions have in them. And as you can see in the current policy right now, work sessions, it talks about setting the agenda and the order. And then it says, members of the public may provide written public comment to the council by mail or email to the city clerk's office by 4:00 PM the day of the meeting. And then it talks a little bit more about how they won't be addressed during that meeting, but they'll be added to the entire packet. There is no language currently in the policy about allowing for verbal, whether in-person or remote public comment in the work session policy here. So taking a look, we did a kind of a deep dive of those five elements that we highlighted, and these are included in your packet tonight in Table A. Table A specifically is dealing with regular meetings. And then Table B talks about work sessions. So we'll get to the topic of work sessions here, but first I just wanted to focus on regular meetings with you all. So the first two items on Table A are really talking about whether or not to allow for people who didn't register or sign up to provide public comment. So you can see on the first row here, it's about in-person. So whether or not to allow in-person, unregistered public commenters. And what we have here is kind of a risk assessment for Zoom bombing. And since this is all online where this commonly happens, there would be very minimal risk for it to happen for allowing in-person individuals to provide public comment who did not pre-sign up using the signup sheets. So our recommendation is to, you know, either allow them or not allow them, but to be consistent and make sure that we provide consistent language in the policy as well as, you know, potentially in language for the presiding officer to read during a public meeting. So the first option for you all is just want to get some feedback on for allowing in-person, unregistered public commenters to allow or to not allow.
Have a question first.
Sure.
So when you say consistent, are you suggesting that whatever we do for council meetings, that we mirror that in work sessions?
Not, we're focusing right now just on regular meetings.
I know. But that's, when you read it, it kind of seems like that that's what the thought process is, like, whatever we do for one, we should be doing for the other, but that's not what you're saying.
Not at this point. What I'm saying is if we, if you all were to offer the opportunity for individuals who hadn't signed up to provide public comment, provided there's time during the meeting, that you would always allow that.
So.
Which we currently do.
Yeah, in practice.
Say, is there anyone else?
Yeah, in practice, they, you know, people, they sign up, I get to sign up. I, you know, read, and then I always say, is there anyone else wishing to comment? You know, and that means someone who's not on my list maybe came in late, wherever. So in practice, we have allowed it.
It's existing policy too.
Yeah. And it's the policy too.
And the risk on that's low, because all the problems earlier on, on the virtual.
Yeah.
I mean, I see no reason to change that.
I don't see any reason either. So. So if we're good.
Someone wants to show up to a council meeting in person and do hate speech. That feels like a lower risk, as outlined in the briefing.
And we'll go listen up for three minutes, and then we're shutting them down.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor, do you have a question?
So if we, if we, are you saying that if we continue to allow unregistered people here in the room, that we should also allow unregistered online?
No.
No, that's the second item. I was going to say, solely in-person right now is what we're focusing on, but to be consistent across the board for in-person participating. So it sounds like there's consensus across the group for option number A.
Did we lose Mike again?
Mine just have his video on.
No, I'm here. Yeah, I agree a hundred percent with everything.
Okay.
There's consent, what I'm saying.
So moving on to the second item, so this is also talking about unregistered individuals, but in this particular case, it's about allowing those who are participating remotely, who did not sign up in advance to also provide public comment, provided there is time. And we designated this as a higher risk, as you can see here, because Zoom bombing mostly occurs when there is no pre-registration, as I outlined previously. However, doing this, I do want to make the disclaimer, would not necessarily deter all future Zoom bombing. I mean, again, you could have a concerted effort where individuals are pre-registering in advance and Zoom bombing. But for consistency purposes, similar to the item above, choose to be consistent, either allow it or to not allow it, provided there is time. And so our recommendation for staff is to not allow unregistered remote commenters, as it would reduce the opportunities for Zoom bombing and to continue to require the two-hour in-advance pre-registrations. And so as you can see here, we've got two options. We've got C and D. C is to allow, and D is to not allow.
I'm, I've been leaning towards D all day, and I think two hours is plenty of time. And I, it bothers me that one or two people screwed up for everybody. But until we get to a safer place, I think we have a good policy in place right now.
Sarah, Phil, not allow?
Supportive?
Not allow?
Three.
Good. Good.
So moving forward with option D. Great.
And it's, I mean, it's also posted, they can do written comments as well, right?
Absolutely. All right, and so we have some language crafted here, and we will now update this language to reflect both A and D. So moving to time limitations, we heard about removing the ability to limit the total amount of time dedicated to a specific issue. As far as Zoom bombing goes, there's no risk associated with this one. We did want to bring up that this could result in one topic and perhaps one perspective of that topic to dominate a public comment period. However, the council has language in there right now, as we've drafted it, that you could add additional time to the public comment period during that public comment period or add it at the end of the meeting as well. So there could be more opportunity for additional voices to be heard if they weren't heard during that initial section. I think there could be, you know, equity concerns about the first come, first served approach. If, you know, everybody signs up and then somebody comes in at 8:58 and they find that they are, you know, fifteen people deep in the conversation and then have to wait, you know, potentially two hours to provide a public comment, if that's extended by the council. So we don't really have a recommendation on this particular item, but the options would be either to E or move the ability to limit the total amount of time dedicated to a specific issue or to continue to allow the ability to limit the time allowed to a specific issue. So the options would be E or F.
I lean toward E, because I, I'm not a big fan of limiting public comment. I think we need, if people want to talk to us, I think we need to hear from them. I'm all, I think we stick with the three minutes on each individual, but I'm not fond of the idea of limiting how many people get to speak.
No, and then these circumstances, in practice in the past, we said, if someone has made your point, can you please, you know, stick to that? So, but we haven't actually limited it, we just have made that.
It's been very rare that we've had situations where we had how many people wanting to public comment. I think of two or three.
It's usually land use, right?
Well.
There's only been a few in, you know, in thirteen years that I've been here that we had a lot of people come wanting to speak.
Can we put a land use provision in there?
Yeah, I agree with Lenny a hundred percent, but if, if there is like, you know, dozens and dozens and dozens of people, I think it shouldn't be three minutes. I think we should limit to closer to like two minutes.
I, I would, I would be against any, any limit on, on people. And if it's three minutes, I would say, you know, really, these are the exceptions, not the rules that we're gonna, you know. It might happen once every five years where we, you know, have something that's gonna go that long. And if that many people show up to be heard, I think it's important that we listen to all of them.
So, yep. When I was thinking about this, I was actually thinking of like a bonus thirty seconds, just in case they hadn't got, you know, like flashing red or something on the timer. Because if, you know, if they, if they're, you know, in the middle of their flow and they, I mean, of course, we want them to keep it. And we could, we could turn the timer from green to red at two minutes and thirty seconds so that they really have a full understanding, especially if we have a timer at the podium, which is what I think is suggested somewhere in here. Like, we need the timer that's on the screen, and then we were gonna have, it sounded to me like potentially a timer at the podium, was that?
Yeah, and we'll talk about that at our, the next.
Oh, sorry.
Here, so yeah, we're gonna be talking about that in just a second.
Okay.
I would agree, but I think when you're talking about like a hundred people, many of them are gonna be saying the same exact thing. So, you know, at that point, I think two, two minutes is probably more adequate.
I, I would rather just, if it's three minutes, there's a hard cutoff, the same thing for everyone, and then have just a quick handout form if they want to provide additional comment through, you know, through email or through something else, just so they have that option.
Yeah, but we, but we all know people run over purposely and, you know.
That's why I say we cut it off, and then we.
We'll get that microphone cut off here in a second, but I think we're, now, we have some consensus around we remove the ability to limit total amount of time dedicated to specification.
Right, so, so moving forward with the, and one thing I did just want to point out to with time limitations, you know, the language certainly says three, and we can add some additional language to be able to change that. But applying it consistently with all people who are providing public comment. So if it's reduced, you know, for example, down to a period of two minutes, that every individual who's providing the comment gets two minutes.
I don't see that, I mean, three, I don't see any reason we need to shorten it to three minutes. I think we stand with a standard three minutes, and, you know, if we have that occasion where there's a lot of people, that's, that's kind of the job, right? I mean, if we're not gonna listen to the public, why are we even here?
I agree.
Okay, then the microphone controls.
Great, so we've got some language, and we will update that language to reflect that. So the next three items, these again, kind of are the more administrative, not as substantive. And when we're looking at microphone controls, it was to mute in-person microphones after the time expiration in three minutes. What we wanted to point out is alone, this might not be effective for stopping in-person from providing comments. In chambers specifically, when you're standing up there, when you turn off the mic, you don't really hear it as a mic being turned off. You continue to provide comment. And so it could be helpful for a presiding officer, as the language currently says in the policy, to let the individual know that their time has come up and the microphone has been turned off and that the next person is coming up to speak.
Yeah, that could backfire too, couldn't it?
I mean, it's the way I've, we've usually done it. I've said loud, I, up to now.
A lot of leeway though.
Yeah, loud, I've given a lot of leeway, and we haven't come right off that three minutes. But when the microphone turns off, then I'd say your microphone's turned off, we'll have to go on next. And I think we should be consistent on that.
Should we, we put that on the screen too? The microphone shuts off at the end of three minutes so that they have a full understanding?
And we could put it in the briefing, it's included in the agenda. Or, and also on the signup sheet, saying like, your, the microphone will be disabled at three minutes.
That would be.
We, we can put them in both of those places.
For a warning.
Yep, yep.
I think, you know, we, having the visual cue too is really important, so, and we've been working on that. We think we have it pretty close to having it down, right? Well, we'll say, we'll flash or it's stop or what, what?
Yeah, and that's the last one, which is timer. But before I get to timer, I'm just being consistent, thinking about muting individuals who are on Zoom and remote as well. So our recommendation is just to be consistent on the microphone controls. If we're gonna cut somebody off in person, to also cut them off, which is more effective remotely. And so the, just wanna, it sounds like we've got consensus on here to add language on muting, but then I just want to check with the council too. We have G and H, and so H would be to add language on muting and a verbal reminder from the presiding officer that their microphone has been muted.
Yes. What signage?
What do we do about a person who's testifying in person, and they're told their time is up, and they keep going, and they're told their time is up, they need to stop? Because they keep going.
Chief. I guess. A couple of comments on that, Councilmember Cox, I think it's a really good question. I think number one, it's always good, you know, again, to have the presiding officer say, you know, something to the effect of, your mic has been muted, and a staff member will connect with you to continue the conversation. And that way, you can hopefully move it to the foyer and get a bit more information if they want to continue to provide that. I think to your point, though, if it's something where the person is not moving, that becomes a meeting disruption, and there are very specific rules of what you can do during a meeting disruption. And so we would follow what the RCW says.
I don't feel like the chief should have to act as the bailiff. Be able to get people out of the way without asking the chief of police to escort anybody.
I mean, so far, it hasn't been that big of an issue, and I've been able to handle most of it. So I'm pretty confident we can do that. You're right, if someone is just going off, we can postpone the meeting and we could leave and stuff. But we just, we haven't done it, that happens in Olympia, but that hasn't happened in Lacey.
People heed your advice and keep it classy.
For the most part, to keep it classy, so.
This is, this is where too, I think, at least my idea is important to have, instead of additional comment, you know, out in the foyer is having it be submitted written and having an easy form where they submit it. That way, we can actually all see it as well, and it's not just a private conversation. That, that's kind of where my, my alignment was. Any additional after the three minutes can be submitted in writing, because people are, when they're talking, they're just gonna go up there and ramble, and they might not actually be making the point they're trying to make, but if they can write it down, it might be more effective for them to communicate what it is they're actually trying to get across.
And great point, Councilmember Downing, and I think that can be, you know, part of the conversation too with the staff member of providing that alternative way to provide feedback to the council. So it sounds like from the council, we've got.
If I may, maybe that's my point, like the two or two and a half minute mark is given a grace period of like thirty seconds. That way, if they do continue, it's shut off right at the three-minute mark, and it doesn't go into the four-minute and that sort of thing, and it doesn't cause a ruckus and chief having to get involved, et cetera.
Yeah.
Forget on remote.
Instead of calling it a grace period, we could just say a thirty-second warning. You've got thirty seconds to wrap up here.
And I think that's where the timer will be very helpful. So it sounds like H is consensus.
H is right.
Great, so then moving on to timers, our recommendation is to use a visible in-person and remote timer on Zoom. And what we would do is attach a iPad to the podium as well, so individuals who are up there could see the timer and see how much time they had left.
So they wouldn't have to look over there if they're reading something perhaps.
Correct, and even over here, we're still taking a look at what our options are for repeating the Zoom meeting potentially over there, so the timer could be up there, but it would be right there in front of them. Everybody else could see it clearly on the screen. And if you're remotely participating, you would also see it very clearly on your screen. There is also a noise and a sound for when it does hit that three-minute marker, so it would give them another type of cue that their time has come up.
So at the thirty-second mark, can the timer go full screen?
That I don't know at this point. It's a Zoom add-in that we're using, and so we can certainly play around with it, but we do know we can use it right now for a three-minute timer.
Flashing red, things like that.
Those are all things we can look into. At a minimum, I can promise that we can use a Zoom timer. So the option for the council is I use the Zoom timer or Jay do not use the Zoom timer.
Use the, use the timer.
Fantastic.
Small shock.
All right, well, then transitioning from regular meetings, I want to turn to work sessions, which is a little bit different here. And thinking about work sessions, we came up with four options for the council to contemplate. And so the first option is to continue with the current policy.
I like that current policy and current practice are clearly two different things.
So the current policy is to only allow written public comments and not allow feedback opportunities verbally. The second is current practice, which is to allow ad hoc comments at the council discretion. And the third would be to add a verbal public comment period to work sessions, similar to regular meetings, which is what I think Deputy Mayor, you were asking about here a little bit earlier in our conversation. And then the fourth one would be to add additional public hearings, and where these would occur, whether it was. And then the fourth one would be to add additional public hearings and where these would occur, whether it was at regular meetings or at work sessions. Because these could be topic specific, so if the council really wanted feedback on one item, it could be done as a public hearing. And we'll get into the nuances of each one of these, um, but we're recommending that we continue with the current policy, which is to not allow opportunities. Uh, beyond written public comment. And so to do the deep dive on the tables, and again, this is table B in the packet, and this is our recommended option to continue with the current policy. Um, it's consistent, it's fair, every individual, um, in the community has the opportunity to provide written public comments. Prior to every meeting, up to two hours before, it's consistently noticed. So people would pick up an agenda and they would see very clearly that there is no public comment or public engagement period throughout the work session. Whereas they would pick up the regular meetings and they would see that a public comment period is there for, uh, general discussion. Or general conversation. Um, this is our recommended one, and so this would be, you don't need to make, uh, changes to the po- the policy itself, but you would, uh. Need to consider stopping the current practice. The second item is continue the current practice, um, and we took this as kind of a risk assessment, not in the Zoom bombing. We're beyond Zoom bombing now, we're just talking just generally, and more just kind of a, kind of a liability, uh, First Amendment right kind of, um, risk. And so it could create a liability, there could be the possibility of it creating another limited public forum and all of the rules associated with that. And having to have, you know, individuals be allowed to participate, whether at that meeting or additional meetings. Um, it's not consistent, it can be seen as selective or arbitrary. Um, you know, determining who can speak, why they can speak, why others don't get the opportunities to speak during different council meetings. It's also not consistently noticed to the public, there's no indication of when an individual might be able to provide comment, when they might not be able to provide comment. It could also be, uh, uh, hard to determine the background of the individuals and the context in which they're speaking. And then it can also diminish confidence in the public engagement process and work performed by advisory boards. And we'll get into that in just a second, a little bit more detail. We don't recommend this, we think creating a consistent way to hear community input is going to be the best way to hear community input. Um, but it is an option that the council could consider. So going back to the idea of diminishing confidence in the public engagement process, I did wanna highlight one of our, um, I would say really incredible. Recent public engagement processes, and this was in our Community and Economic Development Department with the Neighborhood Commercial District Process. They worked for, um, you know, a year plus on gathering information and feedback from the community on what they wanted to see in neighborhood commercials. And so I'm borrowing some slides here from Han Shepard, um, but you can see through the winter, they engaged with over a hundred and fifty people in person. They saw a hundred or eight hundred and seventy-five online and survey participants. They had over a thousand people engaged with just materials online, whether it was downloading information or looking at different pages, et cetera. They also did outreach to businesses and, uh, tenants, uh, they went to thirty-six businesses within eight districts. With thirty-one business owners, site managers, property owners, and they created this really extensive. Um, documentation of all of the feedback that they heard from those individuals. They also held a winter, uh, Hyatt Community Open House, where they took all of the information collected from those other two areas and said, this is what we heard. Uh, can you tell us a little bit more, did we get this information right, and, um, provide another opportunity for community members to engage? Uh, in addition to that, the, um, Planning Commission also held a public hearing in, uh, early winter twenty twenty-four. Where they received thirty-eight written comments, they also had seven verbal comments, and the Planning Commission went through the process of having this public hearing. And gathering community input in a consistent, um, way. So, um, that, that work again, just kind of highlights all of the work going on, you know. Bringing something up from getting community feedback to a policy recommendation to the city council. Um, third option here is to add a verbal public comment period to work sessions, which would be consistent with regular meetings. Um, would offer consistent and fair opportunities to the public, it would be consistently noticed. Um, it could increase work session durations, depending on the number of public commenters you had, but to your point, Councilmember Greenstein, um, there's not. Typically a whole lot of public commenters. Um, and our staff recommendation is, um, we don't recommend this out of all of the four recommendations. However, it could be the most efficient, fair and consistent way to hear public comment and input at a work session. And it could be done at the beginning of the work session, or it could be done at the end of the work session. So individuals could hear the conversation of the council and then provide public comment in a very standardized way.
But this would be public comment, just like it is at a regular meeting, it wouldn't be specific, topic specific.
It wouldn't be topic specific, um, however, it would give them the opportunity, again, if let's say it was at the beginning or the end, to hear. Or read the packet and provide it on a topic, but yeah.
I'll just add, Shannon, it wouldn't necessarily be topic specific, it could be, but it, it could be anything, much like.
It certainly could, um, but one of the things too that we were highlighting with this is being consistent too, right, between the practices, but it, it could be items on the agenda. However, one of the problems we heard from other jurisdictions is that a comment could sound like it's relating to an item on an agenda. And then, you know, two minutes into it, it's not so closely related, and then there were problems of, you know, do we cut this individual off or not cut this individual off for allowing that? Um, and then the final of the, the four options is to, um, add, uh, additional public hearings. And so the city could hold a public hearing whenever it desires. Um, however, um, there is certain noticing that comes with public hearings, and so there is an additional kind of element of making sure that we plan for these. And get advance notice out to the community, it would be a consistent way to, uh, get feedback on particular items that the council might want feedback. Um, it could also very much like, you know, adding the, the public comment section, increase work session durations. Uh, we don't recommend this option, um, it could be difficult to determine what items in advance would need public hearings. Uh, in addition to that, you know, you have some advisory boards that also hold this like statutorily required public hearings, and I'll use the example of the Planning Commission. And so again, it could be something where it seems like it's, um, you know, duplicating the work already done by the advisory board. So those are the, the four options that we reviewed as part of the additional thought on work sessions. Um, like I mentioned earlier on, we do recommend continuing with the current policy, uh, to not allow feedback beyond opportunities, uh. Beyond written comments, however, if the council wanted to go with another option outside of that one, we would recommend being standardized and being consistent. And adding a public comment period, whether at the beginning or the end of a work session.
So you don't like our current practice, are you saying?
Our current practice happens so rarely.
Yes.
Um, the thing is, this is so difficult for. Put the council in a position where we're at a work session, we think we have all the right information, someone's here who, who maybe. Give us better information and we're saying, ah, sorry, it's policy, we're gonna make, we're gonna make a bad decision because we can't listen to you. I mean, I just have a problem with that, um, the, the thing is, is where I've seen in the past is, is language that says. Um, the presiding officer, the mayor, may, may, with the consent of the full council. Take, take public comment, that is a, isn't that their current, in our, in our current policy someplace?
In the regular meetings, but not in the work sessions.
I'm very supportive of option three, that we would notice the public, that we allow public comments, because I know us. We have a hard time not engaging with the public, when the public shows up and is interested in talking to us, it's hard. But I think what's happening now is sometimes people show up, we have noticed the public that we do not accept public comment, people show up. And we do talk to them, but there might be people who, if they had known they would have an opportunity to talk to the council, they would have come. But they saw the notice that we post everywhere, that we don't talk to people during work sessions, so they didn't come, so we're creating sort of a. A disadvantage for people who read the packet in advance, that they're not gonna show up, but then some people do, because maybe they just know. So I, I, I lean toward allowing public comment during work sessions, because we wanna continue to engage with the public, but we should be consistent.
Question on that, I, I like, I, I agree, but could we do it so public comment only on things on the agenda?
Yeah.
Rather than our regular meeting where you can comment anything you want, right?
You get the road walkers, like you even said, the people who veer off.
If they do that, so.
That may happen, but I mean, at least it gives us, we're not gonna have people coming, you know, we have the, these are the topics tonight, they're coming to talk to us about. Something completely unrelated. Because I mean, the few times that it has happened, it's always been, the reason we've asked them to speak is because it's about a topic that we wanted their input on.
I can think of twice this year already that somebody here in the audience has, has added value to, to something that we were contemplating. Um, you know, the Neighborhood Commercial District, the guy who, you know, he had a two acre parcel, then we, we kind of looked at it and like, oh, six acre park, two, two acre. So we were able to come up with a new strategy to scale the parcels and the five thousand to fifteen thousand. That wasn't in any of the previous information that we had received, or even something that was contemplated, we were gonna go fifteen thousand for the whole thing, right? So, so somebody came and added value to, to what we were about to decide on, so that happened once, um, when we were talking about the rack expansion. You know, the USL guy was here, he added value, uh, and so it's, it, it seems as if when people. Understand what we're, what, when they know what's gonna be on our work session agenda, they either come down themselves or send a representative. Uh, to, to see that, you know, their interest, what's happening to their interest. And that person seems to be knowledgeable enough, um, to, to give us some type of information or advice, or some piece of, some nugget of wisdom that we have yet to. Put in our arsenal.
Public intelligence, but I, I really don't think a lot of people notice the difference between. A work session and a, and a formal council session.
Also that.
They, you know, if somebody comes and they wanna talk to the city council, I think they should be allowed, regardless of the format of the meeting. It's just, it just hurts my heart, you know, to have somebody come all the way down here. And only to be told, no, we don't accept public comment at, at work sessions, it just feels wrong. Now, I, I agree, we need to have strict, you know, time set aside for this. And, you know, we need to enforce that and we need to be consistent, but I just, it, it's always bothered me. That we haven't allowed public comment at these second sessions.
Councilor Dunning?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, with, you know, with what happened a few weeks ago, we only really got the value out of that. Because we were engaged in conversation, we were able to ask questions, which probably would not happen during just a standard public comment. So if, if there's not the ability to actually engage with these people on the kind of exact specific questions that we're trying to resolve. I don't know if, if we're gonna get the value, so if it's either, you know, everyone can write public comment, or we find a way where we can add. People in as, um, presenters or, you know, optional subject matter experts. That, that maybe have a higher requirement, maybe twenty-four hours in advance or forty-eight hours in advance, but I don't, I don't. Know if we're gonna get the value we want during just a public comment.
You know, this is a really good conversation, I just wanna add this one little bit for food for thought, not every topic that comes to work sessions is really the same. And so we look at public comment, because some go through a very extensive process, as, uh, Shannon highlighted with the, like, the neighborhood commercial piece, or some of the things that come through the Plan Commission or Park Sport. And some don't do, go through that process, so you start looking at how you provide public comment and that engagement. A lot of times when they're at that engagement, they've already, they've been participating in that process all along, and, and some of those more lengthy processes, so I just want you to be. Consider that in your, in your deliberations, because you also have an advisory board that goes through a lot of work and, and effort to do that engagement and to develop their recommendation as well. So I just wanna acknowledge that work. So by that rationale, then, then agenda-specific comment during workshop would probably be a good avenue to, for us to explore. Workshop, work session.
I, I will go back to, I agree with the overall sentiment that if someone shows up, whether it's a work session or a council meeting. And they want to speak to us, I think we should allow them to speak.
Absolutely.
I mean.
I agree.
It's like, it doesn't happen very often, and so, well, I guess when, we can. We can add it to the work sessions, a public comment period, um, we can, you know, we can even say, uh, on work sessions. Could you, uh, try to, try to limit it to the agenda items, you know, push them in, in, in this direction, and then. I, I think we should leave at that, but.
I, I agree that we should allow the public comment, I do think though that Nick just brought up a really good point on that. It, in the situations that we're talking about, where it's happened, where there was actually interaction.
Yeah.
That wouldn't be the case in public comment, because we don't interact during public comments, so we really wouldn't be. The, the, our, our current practice, uh, which is what, you know, the problem is, our practice doesn't fit our policy. Is really not that we allow public comment, that's not the practice, the practice is we engage in conversation with people who have specific subject matter. No.
Yeah. And for the most part, during public comment, we don't engage with the, with the commenters.
Same, we can't.
Sometimes we have, right, sometimes if a, someone has said something, I can, hey, you know, I will speak up and say. Actually, blah, 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 and or can you go meet with such and such, and I haven't, you know, we haven't engaged a little bit, I don't. I think that is, uh, common practice, I, I don't know if we have it in here, but I think there's, I don't know if there's anything that would prevent us. Unless we specifically said you couldn't.
And it doesn't say that. I think we go with having, just have a public comment period like we do for our, for our regular meetings.
And if you do do that, there doesn't seem to hear something coming, public comment, you can schedule another time to have a more focused and scheduled conversation with a group of folks.
Yeah, I agree with everything, especially with Andy's, what Andy said, but keep in mind, we all are aware, there's gonna be the one person that's gonna try to devalue the meeting. And everybody in attendance trying to get educated or learn, or, or the whole process, so as long as we treat everybody the same. Um, then I'm a hundred percent with where we're going on this.
Anyone feel that our current practice has failed us?
No.
Our current practice, I, I.
No, but as Shannon brought up, it's open, it, it's not consistent, and it does definitely have some liabilities to it. Because we're not being consistent.
Exactly.
Creates risk because it's inequitable.
Right.
It's unfair, because we're saying one thing and we're doing another, and we're giving some people access to us in a way that we're not announcing to the larger public.
And that's why we should allow public comment at any meeting.
There you go.
And I don't think we have a limit to the agenda either.
Yeah.
Remember there was a day when we had council meetings and we limited public comment to.
And state laws overrule this on that, so.
That's how it was for years.
But, so I think.
I agree, Carolyn.
So I think you have some direction, I think let's add a public comment period to work sessions, and I, I guess we'll see how it goes, right?
Not gonna be that big deal.
I don't think it's gonna be that big.
Based on the huge crowds that we get for work sessions, I don't think it's gonna like overwhelm us and, you know, add that much time to our meetings, so.
Right, councilmembers, so I've heard, um, to move forward with option three, which is add the verbal public comment period to work sessions and to allow for items. On the agenda as well as off, any items?
Just like a regular meeting.
Alright, so consistency between the two meetings.
Now, will, will we accept Zoom comments on Zoom as well as in-person or work session, at work sessions?
Registered comment?
I think we'd have to.
Have to register, two L or pre-register.
So consistency between regular meetings and work sessions.
Hoping that the answer would be yes or no.
Okay, what do you have to say?
Well, thank you, council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then you're up also next with the Diversity Equity Inclusion and Belonging Strategic Plan.
Right, well, I've got one more presentation for you all tonight. So just to provide a kind of brief recap from our last work session where we introduced, uh, the DEIB strategic plan. Not, not presentation apparently. Let's try that again. Take the presentation in reverse here, alright, here we go. So, uh, tonight, the purpose of tonight is to collect council input for the message, so it's not necessarily that we're gonna sit here and type out the message together. Write out the message together, but gather the broad ideas, and then with that, um, we'll come back to the council with a draft to review. And then can go over any edits, additions or inputs that the council may want, or if you wanna send it back to have us work on it again in totality. Um, with the idea that we would then move forward, uh, with considering the, uh, Diversity Equity Inclusion Belonging Strategic Plan in early September. So the council did review the draft plan on, uh, the last work session meeting on July ninth. And just again, as a brief overview, the purpose is to create a strategic guide for the city to advance and support equity efforts in the greater Lacey community. It aligns really well with all of the established work plan goals. It aligns really well with all of the established work plan goals from the council, including creating a vibrant place to live, work and play, an engaged community, quality transportation and infrastructure, environmental stewardship and excellence in programs and services. We went over the roadmap of how the plan was created, but just really briefly, we had community engagement sessions. These were continued with community forums and community surveys to get information from our community. We did an introduction with city staff on current departments and current policies and programs. We held twenty one public meetings with the Commission on Equity to go over different elements within the plan. We reviewed this with our executive team as well as some staff and took that feedback back to the Commission on Equity as part of those twenty one meetings. We went through that cycle several times through review and feedback and input, continue to do community engagements. And then finally put together the draft plan, which the Commission on Equity recommended at one of their last meetings. And then we met with the council to review it and now we're working on the council message. So the Commission on Equity played a very heavy role in this. The Commission on Equity, just as a reminder, is here to identify and advance opportunities that will create a more welcoming community. Continue critical conversations on race and equity, seek greater participation from underrepresented community members and identify existing gaps and barriers which could prevent full participation in government and public policy. So I won't go over all of these, but here's a list of all of the twenty one meetings again, in which we talked about different elements of the plan. And we did extensive community engagement, like I already mentioned, with our engagement sessions, our community forums, our focus groups, community events, the Lacey Care Survey. And then working with partners at their events as well. Through all of this, we created the plan that it was in the work session packets, but just wanted to point out some of the elements. It includes a vision, a mission, equity statements, the goal areas of workforce and work environment, community access and engagement, policies, programs and services and livability. The Commission on Equity created a message that they wanted to provide the community on their involvement and their work and their whys. And they went through a very similar process for input that we're going to do here tonight with you all. So what we're here tonight is to work on the city council message. And as you'll notice, I've got some fantastic colored sticky notes over here and some pens. And so we're going to do a little exercise here with the room as well as online. And so I'm going to start here on the room and then for you council members online, I'll talk a little bit about what that's going to look like for you. So I'm going to pass down sticky notes. Please take a pad of sticky notes. Please take a pen if you don't have one. And we're going to do what's called an idea cloud exercise. So with the sticky notes, on each of the sticky notes, you're going to write one idea of what you want to include in the message. So not everything on one sticky note, but a singular idea.
So I do one per note.
One per note. Don't put multiple ideas on a note. And you might be like, well, hey, some of these are really close together and that's fine. Don't put them on the same sticky note. Write them on different sticky notes. And so every council member, we're just going to do that here by themselves for a couple of minutes. Write down all of the sticky notes that you want to put on there. And then when you're done, you're going to place them on the board. And after that, we are going to do a map concept and clusters. So the all of you working together here in the building will read what everybody else has put on there and then you'll have to cluster them into similar ideas. So as an example, I have created a mock cluster here. So you can see at the top cluster, you've got hear from the unheard, increase how we engage, involve more voices. Those are all similar in the content of, hey, we really want to get everybody into the process. And so that could be one cluster. Another cluster could be, we want to create a welcoming community. We want to make a place where everybody feels like they belong and that could be another cluster. And through that, we'll see kind of large clusters of ideas of what the council wanted to include in their message. So first step will be just write down individually your own ideas. And then we'll have you put them on the board just randomly. Don't cluster them yet. And then all five of you will work together in clustering your ideas together. All right?
Sure.
All right, for those of you who are.
My brain's working as well at this moment.
So for those of you who are online, it's going to be a very similar concept. What we're going to do is we are going to start a whiteboard here in the Zoom meeting. And so you should be seeing a screen with little dots on it. And over here on this side, you should see a sticky note. And if you select the sticky note, you can pick a color. You can create your own digital sticky note and you can write an idea here. And it will be posted onto the board and we'll make sure it gets incorporated onto the larger board as well. But the two of you can work together on clustering your ideas.
So I might have difficulty. I had to swap to my phone because the wifi went out. I, oh, maybe.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I I don't know if I'm going to be able to put anything on it.
One idea or multiple?
So one idea per sticky note, but put down as many ideas as you want, everything you want included in this message. Councilmember Dunning, if you want to, just send me some of your feedback. We can make sure it gets incorporated into the clusters.
Is it one idea or one word?
It is as many words as you want to describe that idea. This is just an example of an idea. And so you want to use the sticky note function.
Use all your words, bro. And we're trying to convey that who we are as council, who we are as a city.
What do we want to say at the front of this beautiful document?
Your your message of introducing why this document, the community, which is to me.
Okay, so what the, what this DEI plan is to us and how we are going to implement it and how it's going to work for you.
You can certainly talk about that. Any ideas of what you'd want to communicate to the public about, you know, why this plan exists and.
Remember, it's just an intro. We're not writing the whole plan. Just the intro.
I'll write a book if I need to.
The the plan's already written.
Okay, all right. I know you're rewriting. I read the plan, you know. By the way, pages one oh three through one oh eight weren't in there.
Yeah, so we had to add a couple of extra pages and take off a couple of pages. And so once we finalized it, we were going to do the final numbering of all of the pages. So I'm glad you you found that.
Shannon, can you see that?
Um, you know, I can. Maybe that's a better way, council member. I can stop the, I'll stop this and we can write down some of your ideas.
Sorry, I'm challenged.
Logically challenged.
I got that one. Perfect. Thank you.
Been a while this work already.
It's only ignorance if you know better, right? I don't know better.
Yes, obviously haven't looked at it yet, but I'm guessing there's going to be a ton of overlap there.
I think that's, that's we'll find out, right? And I think that'll help us give us some good direction.
Something floating.
I do like how you all have a unique color.
Oh, a bunch of stuff.
Right, so once the deputy mayor gets back, we can have you all go up there and figure out what should be what.
To cluster.
Group together.
We're completely losing it.
Definitely crispy with these, can you?
Yeah, that's what he had said. I heard that.
But he's texting me.
The sticky on those isn't very sticky.
We're gonna grab some tape here too.
I'm using Nick's handwriting.
You're what? You're using Nick's handwriting? So you have forgery skills? Is that what you're telling us?
I'm just not claiming my, my handwriting.
You have to explain them in my voice as well, too.
This was.
Should we do it on the table?
On the table. Let's bring them all over here and then they're flat and they won't go anywhere.
Over here where they can't fall off.
This is how the magic of government happens.
That's right.
Listen, we have, we're, we're being a dynamical.
I think he's in bulk for them.
Got some more ideas over here. Saw it there, this space over here. And then if the council members want to come around and you can cluster a.
Everyone's good. Come over here now. Oh, we have to come over here and cluster. We're gonna cluster now.
Like ideas.
Think this fits with that as well.
That's a cluster, all right.
Moves them away from that. We got our first cluster started here. People first fit there, you think? Kind of, right? Sort of, maybe. Put it here.
This looks like a. Just paid every voice heard.
Got some Uber Eats credits, like the disorders of.
Kind of go together.
Really? Yeah, a hundred minutes.
It's pretty cool. There's sort of a drone show right there. There's a hundred blues left behind you.
I heard helicopter landed.
I can't remember the name of it.
Yeah, the residents equally valued.
Don't go that other way.
Shannott?
Shannott.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. I'm just moving it away from that cluster. That's all. Changing the cluster. Moving it so there was room there.
There's no water. Still comes. It's too far away.
There is Wahop Lake.
Oh.
But it is on the other side. It's a kettle lake.
The last year I sent a drone show to Jen just so she could see what, you know. Yeah, I never knew. She's probably already seen a drone show, but it looks better this year.
And this is, but what I don't know is. Everyone be successful.
Yeah.
This is the opposite of that.
Yeah.
The one in Sea Town, it has interference and stopped a few drones.
Successful.
Trying to figure out who's that Paul right now, but.
Respect.
This is more about messaging.
Yeah, I think that kind of stands a little, but I think it's an important one.
I have mine short.
Start new stuff in here, Ken. You get to match them up. I'm done.
Okay, you give it up. Just take shifts.
Making more work for ourselves.
So this one kind of goes here again. A lot of them in that cluster there. Sort of, some of these are not in any cluster at the moment. All of these are not. All these two.
Every voice is hard.
People, first, that can fit into a lot of places, but. Here maybe.
Nick, are you still out of town?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
We just, we just started a nine hour rolling, rolling blackout here.
Uh-oh, where are you?
Uh, in Thailand.
He's in the place where they wear really cool sweatshirts.
How's the food? Those people have been at it a long time.
It's definitely, I mean, there's, there's a lot. I I still have, you know, Bangkok is a big mix of food like New York is. So I I've done a few food tours, but I I still have a few set up for some of the different regions because they're different. It's different everywhere.
Looks like we've got some pretty good clusters forming here. And can I have the two council members who are still standing around kind of give us an overview of what the clusters are?
I have yet to examine this cluster. But it, it seems to be that we want to be a very welcoming community, community of all. Everyone is welcome. Welcome to all. The unheard should know that we value them as well. All residents equally valued, plan to take action today to create welcoming, to create a welcoming community for residents now and in the future. So, you know, we just want to, it looks like we were all kind of, and it looks like all the different colors of the spectrum are represented in that one. So we all want people to feel like, you know, hey, we we enjoy having you in Lacey. You're, you know, we care. Next, we want people to feel safe and and free and and be a hate free community, a safe community. Because if we forget our connections or neglect our connections to each other, it's at our own peril. So just, hey, we're, this is a safe place to be, be free. You know, you're not going to get, you know, when I want you, people like those, one of the things they they said they'll do, we're just tired of getting killed just for who we are. You know, and so I was, when when it came to helping those people feel safe, I was happy to do it, to be honest. And so, you know, and I think it's like across the board with that, like when you're here, you should feel safe. So, you want to?
One of the things I want our message to convey is that we recognize our responsibility to make a difference. We're seven people representing almost sixty thousand people. I feel like our message should show that we know. Like we have power and we know that it's part of our job to make this community a better place. Like this plan is a part of how we've committed to do that.
And the only way you do it is with intent, right?
Yeah, it doesn't happen by accident.
It doesn't happen by accident. It doesn't happen by accident. It won't happen if we don't acknowledge it either. And so we have to act with intent.
I would, I would also say, you know, to be welcoming is also to be respectful. I would, I would also say, you know, to be welcoming is also to be respectful, right? I mean, just because you have input or you're heard doesn't mean it's respected, so I think that's an important message, too.
Keep it classy, Lacey, right?
And that, and that we value, you know, every culture that we have in this community. There's no throwaway people, there's no let one left behind, we're, we're here for, for all. And I think that's what this, sort of treating people with respect. You should feel like Lacey is a home, a place that you want to live as soon as you get here.
Was there anything else that the council members wanted to share? I think we've got a beautiful cluster over here, or canvas, maybe I'll say, a mosaic, yeah.
So you're gonna draft something from that, bring it back to us.
I'm gonna take a look at this, based on what you said, too, we'll put together some, you know, message, and we'll take it as a draft, and we'll get some more input feedback from the council.
That's awesome. I wrote one there, it says, "Avoid white noise," and it's really easy, it almost sounds condescending. And I want to be really careful that, you know, it's a very neutral voice. You know, do you, you follow what I'm saying there? It's subtle, but it, it can, yeah.
Yeah, the language we use definitely matters, and so we need to be cognizant of that.
I feel like one of the goals can be, you know, it'd be nice if the language was beautiful, but I want it to be simple, so that everyone feels it.
Well, great, well, thank you for this feedback, council, we'll be in front of you shortly to review it, I appreciate it.
Alright. Does that close out that agenda item, or?
Jen likes to make this happen, think.
Yeah, I know, I wasn't prepared to...
We weren't prepared to have to think tonight?
No. So, before we go into executive session, believe it or not, this is our last council meeting before August 6th, which is our national night out, right? So, before, we've done national night out, and we've been able to completely participate, because it was on Thursday, right? Because it's on Tuesday, and council meeting's on Thursday, now council meetings are on Tuesday, and so we're gonna have to be a little careful, because we have to be back here for council. But what I did, I asked Rick to do, was gather all the information that we currently have on for our national night out, where it's being held at, and the times, and so I'm hoping to, you know, just test around for council, and and what I'm hoping is to get a little feedback from council on which, if you can make it to any of these times, can you please let Nicole know? And we will help coordinate that, so we know who's going to what. So, and that, Nick and Councilor Sten, we'll, we'll email this to you, just so you have it. You know, council will be starting at 6:00. Which, which means that, are there some that we're, we're gonna be able to miss here? My, my other thought was that...
I mean, there are at 6:00 and 6:30.
Yeah. My other, my, my other thought for that night, we, we need to, it's important that we have that meeting, it's like, can't miss that meeting, right? But we could move it a little bit later if we had to, but we could, it depends on, I think it's always important, I feel like, that the council goes out and, and has an opportunity to go into these different communities and, and meet our residents where they're at, you know, that, these are mostly, of course, HOAs and stuff, but it's, I think it's important that, you know, we're seen there with our, with our police officers, and we get to interact. If for some reason we need to move the meeting until 7:00 that night, I, I think we could do that.
So I'll have us... Accommodate most of these, because there's only, there's a few at 6:30, but we can do a 6:00 if we have a 7:00 meeting.
And, and I'll have Nicole follow up and eat the list out and connect with everybody, see what, who's interested in which events, and then we can map that out and see. And if we do need to create a special start time for that meeting on August 6th, then we can, yeah, see what that looks like.
And, because next week, it's, it's a fifth Tuesday, so we're off. And so we have a little bit of time to plan, just take a look at this, if you, like I said, if you, if there's some consensus to move to 7:00, we can...
Is it a council meeting or a work session?
Council. Council meeting.
Regular council meeting.
On the 6th.
In addition, this list, it's early, so it's, there's still some things to confirm in there, with the events and locations, but these are the, all the neighborhoods or, or multifamily areas that, that they're going to be having some type of event. And they all have different end times, some go for an hour and a half, two hours, so I'll add that end times on those two, because that can also...
And do you want to add anything, chief? And then, can you talk about cops, cars?
So by odd chance of fate, I'm also presenting on August 6th to the council, I believe in, in the city manager's report, so if we can put it to 7:00, that'd be fantastic. But hey, we do what we need to do, we'll, we'll adjust as needed. But this Saturday, July 27th, at Cabela's, which is located at 1600 Gateway Boulevard here in Lacey, we're having Cops, Cars and Kids. Very exciting day, it's one of the highlights of our, of our summer. And at Cabela's, we'll have free popcorn and snow cones, and crafts and activities and demonstrations for kids of all ages. We'll also have a car show with awards, which is always fun, a little bit of competition's always kind of fun. We'll have food trucks there for those who'd like to purchase food, we have Boogie Beans Coffee, we have Meggie's Limpia, we have Port Taco Truck Cantina, personal favorite, no favorites, but yeah, it's one of my favorites. Sweet Lee's Ice Cream, and Ricardo's Kitchen Pizza Truck will be there. In addition, we're taking blood donations by Blood Works, and if you donate and sign up to donate, you will get a special commemorative poker chip for our new police building. So a little added incentive to donate blood, it's at Critical Care Supplies right now, so if you do that, that'd be great. And so we're very looking, looking forward to have everybody come out.
No free tacos.
Not that I'm aware of.
Do you want to anything about, do you want to add anything about national night out?
National night out, we'll have teams of officers going out to all the different neighborhoods that have signed up. It is a large-scale event, we send out several teams and emissaries out to all the, all the neighborhoods. The, the deputy chief and I and the other command staff also split up, and we get, try to get everywhere we can, and be a very exciting night as well.
So are you wanting council members to be ride-alongs with the officers to the ones we can, or?
Uh, we're pretty flexible, we can do it a couple of different ways, so we can do ride-alongs, we can do meet you there, because some folks like to do it different ways, so, but we'll be very flexible, we can, we can accommodate that if we need to do that, or someone would like to do that.
Again, council, if you can take a look at the list, say which ones you think you can make it to. Then we'll take a look at all that and then make a decision next week if we need to start at 7:00 o'clock on August 6th. Okay?
Okay.
And with that, the council will now meet in the executive session, discuss performance of a public employee as loud by RCW. Council members attending remotely, please use the separate link issued for the executive session. It is, uh, it is now 7:37, we'll say 7:40. We'll be in executive session for 20, start with...
Let's do this, why don't you give the 30 minutes?
Yeah, let's, let's save 25 minutes, so that will be 7:00, 7:55. Oh, 8:05, we'll be in executive session at 8:05. And you come back, I'll come back and reconvene at 8:05. If there's, if we need to extend the executive session, I'll do that if necessary, so we will be meeting in executive session at 7:40.
Have we ever done one that we didn't extend? I never. I don't recall any.
Guys, I have separate links.
There he is. Morning, sir, if you may. Rick, can you just send this out electronically then?
Yeah.
It's eight oh five. Uh we're going to extend this uh executive session for ten minutes and I'll reconvene at eight fifteen.
Okay.
It is um eight fifteen and this council work session is called uh back to order. Um we have reached the end of our uh